First up is the call of the order for the public hearing on use of trust funds, money from the facilities, the middle school fund for the little boys' school lockers. So as part of the process this year, we've been asked to approve funding for replacing some of the middle school lockers with all of the middle school lockers. Yeah, and as a board, we decided to take that out of the general budget if the used facilities money in the trust fund for that. And so tonight is the hearing on the use of those funds for the middle school locker replacement. It looks like it's approximately $10,000.
Well, no, that was what we had originally estimated during the budget.
Oh, wow.
So there's two quotes going around. Oh, my goodness. Yeah. Joe doesn't get one.
Joe doesn't get it.
Good thing.
One more.
Oh, one more. Here you go. He can have his own. So there's actually two quotes there. The first quote is 30,000, 743.36, and the second quote is 14,270. And there, I mean, Mark can explain, but they're the exact same lockers. Really?
Yeah, believe it or not, they're the same. Same gauge, same.
They see that there's different heights.
Well, the, they're both applesauce.
Okay.
Basically, what they are, they're 12 inch by 12 inch by 60 inch high with no legs assembled in threes.
Okay.
And we're going to put our own feet on because the metal feet rock from the floor, from the water, and we build out of PVC board. We build our own bases.
Bases. So is the first quote like with installation or something?
No, I called the guy back up. This guy did all our lockers. And he says, ask the price. I said, I can get them for half. And he told me basically to get them for half.
You know what's interesting is I can't help but notice the business is from Yarmouth, Maine, which is a really nice town. A really expensive area. That's funny. And no locks?
We don't, we don't put locks on them. They have a place too long, the padlock. But they, we don't have the, see, they do have, you could either get a combination lock or a key lock set into it. But that's just one more thing to worry about.
So both of these quotes, you have to install them and anchor them and do all that anyway?
Yeah.
And and there's no shipping on these?
Same.
It's the exact same gauge, everything.
I would say.
I'm telling you, Yarmouth is, that might have something to do with it. It's a really nice place, and if you can get people to pay that, they're going to turn to it.
Yeah, I'm sure. Because when we did the bathrooms, all of these people were sold out for the price of rice.
So I'm looking at your second quote, and it says requires assembly, ships by truck. What is the shipping?
The, okay, the unit price, one of the pages didn't print properly.
Okay.
Okay, it says assemble or unassemble. The price, if you look at the price, at 396 versus, I think the original was 316.
Oh, okay, just that's sample.
And that, believe it or not, they tried $4.50 to not have any legs on it. I think they tried more to put legs on.
That's funny. Terrific.
But, yeah.
And that's all you have.
Back to three, the way our.
Yeah. And that's all you need is 36 of those?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So.
It's got to be shipping costs over that. There's going to be freight. Yeah, they're shipping by truck.
Yeah, that.
I'm assuming we're going to have. 15,000.
Yeah, it's not going to be, yeah.
Horse sense is one to ship in six weeks, and the last request will be to buy one to three visits.
Yeah, I know. Should we add in something?
I would add in shipping.
Up to?
Up to. Does it say which?
Yeah, it's going to be 140 bucks. I mean, I add up to $500, do you think? Is that, you think it'll cover it? No? I'd say at least $500.
How many are you, how many you ordered?
36, 3.
36.
36 bags of three. Which is hurting.
Did you say up to 15,000?
Big truck.
Yeah.
Up to 15,000. Oh, I'm not, I'm not shipping. So adds another 700 bucks? I would just say up to 15,000. And if it doesn't cover it.
Up to 15,000, where?
That 14,272, 20. We go up to 16, and we give them 1700 to cover the shipping, just in case, and then you cushion. I mean, you can't spend it. Yeah, we're not going to spend it if we sell, right. We'd rather go higher.
I would be surprised if we're shipping. That seems a lot.
700, I think would be close. It's freight on a truck.
Just to verify, it's the same.
It's the same.
It's not.
It is. I mean, it seems like we're getting like, the internet is a finicky place.
I totally get it. No, they're not going to come in two feet tall or made out of big shadow.
I mean, we were just looking at the case. He was pointing out like the gate and back. And, you know, the description on here, again, this is just the internet talking, so it just says 16 gauge. It doesn't give description for the front and back. So.
Right. And if you were seeing, when it comes, what it is, is there another panel that goes on the outside? None of our lockers have those extra panels. It's the inside panel that's on the outside wall.
Right.
Okay, because do they make an active one that covers all the ribbons and stuff? We've never, we've never had.
Right.
I can't see wasting the money on that.
Kevin, you want to order one from each company and then just like, you'll pair those. Do they match what we currently have?
What's that?
Do they match what we currently have? That's cool.
Do they match in color or size or what we have?
And in any shape, size, ball?
There's exactly what we're taking out.
Yeah, okay.
16 gauge.
Yeah. Other than, they'll be great, still great. Yeah, I'm a little deaf, I apologize.
No, it's okay. I've been fooled by the internet before, so I just. If we're buying 30 of them, 6 of them.
I get it.
This one doesn't have prime.
Yeah, I talked to him on the phone.
Okay.
Just, I was hoping to have their quote tonight to bring forward, but they didn't send it out in time. So I don't have that in hand.
Yeah.
Can we start meeting in the other room? Just kidding.
Yeah.
Or the music room.
Yeah.
Music room, the air conditioner's working great.
Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
All right, so I guess if there's no further discussion on that, I would set the motion to approve expenditure of up to $17,000 for the purchase and delivery of middle school lockers from the the facilities expendable.
So.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I will take take them up to adjourned public hearing.
So.
Joe, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tensions, and that motion carries. For that adjournment, now we will. Actually, just a real quick question. I thought there was three things that we needed to do public hearings for.
Well, I know you guys had that discussion when, at the last meeting, and the thing is, we don't have quotes or anything on them. I did give you the list of items that we had discussed during the budget, but we're not at that point to do a hearing.
Okay, then we will call the order, the regularly scheduled pool board meeting. First up is the approval of the minutes from May 22.
I make a motion to the minutes. Second.
Any.
As you think. On page two, under superintendent McGann, the second bullet point, which says end of year ESY, it should be extended school year ESY program. Page two, under superintendent report, the second bullet point, bullet point, and then the second one down. It should say extended school year.
Extended school year program.
End of school year, extended school year program. If ESY is not end of school year, it's extended school year, ESY programming.
That's the name of the end of school year program.
No, that's the name of the summer program, extended school year program. Not the end of year program. It's the, it's summer school. ESY specifically says in the special education manual, extended school year. Not end of the school year. Right.
Right, I think N just needs to be changed to extended.
Extended school year, correct. And then under committee reports, the last line before the motion, it says including in first aid training. You should see included.
Say that one again, Cam.
Under committee reports, the last sentence prior to the motion says including in first aid training, or should say included in first aid training, minor. Nice job on the minutes, Sharon. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the minutes from May 22? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, tensions, and that motion carries. Next up is the approval of the non-public minutes from May 22.
I make the motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes as presented. A second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tensions, and that motion carries. Next up is court funds. I did not receive any court funds.
No, I did not either. Just the North Country Education News and, you know, the handsome scholar picture in front. It's just amazing when you hear the stories of the kiddos. That's, that is good, very nice. We have some amazing students.
Next up is the business administration report.
Yeah, just in the process of ending one school year, one fiscal year, Sharon's pulling together all the reports to go to the state for the student information at the end of the year. So it's pretty busy right now. The orders are coming in from the teachers for the following year, so we'll be setting up the new fiscal year and getting into the ordering and setting up new payrolls and everything. So it's just busy time right now. It's all good.
Thank you. Talk to them again.
Let's see. The tractor is, Mark will be coming at the next meeting with more information on the tractor options that are out there. He'll be moving forward with also seeking a surveyor for approximately 5,000 for the garage and pathway project. And let's see, graduation was a success. It was very nice. It was really nice ceremony.
Can I just play you talking about that? Over $53,000 scholarships. Man, we have a great community here. Amazing.
That's amazing.
It is.
I know for all four kids. I just met, I just met the small group of seniors. I'm like, oh, there's only.
Well, you know, I did notice, though, every student that applied for scholarships received at least one.
Yeah, exactly.
Actually, no, maybe more. Every single one.
Absolutely. I just couldn't leave aside. I expected to see a huge class and I come in, I'm like, wow. I just didn't realize how small.
It's not the smallest one, though. I was talking to Billy, and she said that we had one of eight or something.
No kidding.
Yeah.
Yeah, once upon a time.
Way, way back when. Yeah.
I mean, it was like the music started and they were on the stage.
Pretty much, pretty much.
Sorry, next year you got, you got 20 something next year.
We're going to come back next year.
I was most impressed with the student's ability to pivot AV in the middle of the ceremony, get that thing set up, and play it, and play audio. I would call this a struggle. They did an awesome job. I thought it was a great.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, no, very cool. Great ceremony.
Continuation also went well. And in the same town, same strategy, we were able to just take that machine right up there.
And it was more than 12.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The timing, they had everything going.
Practice.
Okay. I think the, anything, everything else could be according to the agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I know Dr. McGann already touched on continuation and graduation and the North Country Scholar recognition. You know, all those events obviously take a tremendous amount of work. Obviously, the students that are participating in, you know, being celebrated, you know, with the class advisors and the middle school team and parents that are in putting together, you know, a little like, you know, for lack of a better word, you know, like a walking arch, you know, that middle school was fantastic. You know, it's really an all hands on deck piece. You know, Mr. Undersee helping get all the tech stuff ready and then training me and then training Mr. Placy to be able to run this all while it's all happening behind the scenes. You know, it's really such a wide scale community effort to make sure that these go off as well as they did. The kids were amazing, both for the high school and the eighth graders during those practices. You know, we spent, you know, probably close, you know, an hour and a half practicing, you know, a couple times in, a couple times out, walking through, and they're, they're hitting their marks and everything's timed really well. And I mean, it's just, you know, a test of how well that they embrace that moment as well. And for those of you who were there, high school went off flawlessly, last night, middle school went off flawlessly. You know, I just want to tip my hat to everybody that is there to make that happen. Because it is a, it's a large scale effort and, you know, a lot of, lot of nervous energy and what's coming next, and, you know, they, they nailed it. So definitely kudos to our staff and community members and the families and parents that, that helped put that together. So wanted to mention that. In my packet, I referenced the mural that is outside here that you saw when you came in. It will be interactive. It will be interactive before the end of the month. So that was a project that you've heard about kind of along the way in terms of the artist and resident that came in. Each of those panels is, you know, one student's work, which is really cool. So every student that was here, when our artist and resident came in, made their own piece. And then they created a writing component that went with it. And with the help of Mr. Adams, we've actually filmed all the kids reading about that.
Very cool.
So the next step is to make it interactive, trying to make it outside the box. So what will eventually happen in the next couple of weeks is there'll be a QR code kind of in a picture frame that has a little description of the project next to it. And when you do that, it's going to, when you scan it with your phone, it will pop up. And then each square you'll be able to click on and hear the kid breathe. So that, that's where we're at now. It's, it's a little tedious, but we're getting through that and then we're working on that. So, you know, there'll be a, a quick, you know, between 10 and 25 second clip that will all be embedded and it's.
Fantastic. That's very.
You know, these guys will, they'll remember forever when they walk by, and it's quite instinctive when you walk in and when you see it. So they did a tremendous job with that.
Very cool.
Uh, let's see what else. In terms of the end of year stuff, you know, we've got our field days and our field trips, and those have all gone really well. You know, we're getting the staff, we're getting the school ready for all the summer projects that are happening between the flooring and some windows and, you know, the front entryway up here at the elementary. So there's a lot of stuff going on in regards to that. And then staff are getting ready for all of our summer offerings, you know, the ESY that Tammy mentioned. We have our summer STEM camps, our K2 and our 3.6 versions that will be happening in July here as well. Middle high school summer school as well, where they get to recover their competencies to help them keep their credits and keeping them in with standing academically. And then the last thing that just came out, and I didn't get clarification, that's the dolphin, is that the grants? The, the golf opportunity over the summer for high schoolers?
It's just another way to earn.
Right, it was a grant. I just wasn't sure how this one.
No.
Okay, so anyway, so we were able to make and actually put together a golf offering, a half credit of PE for our high schoolers.
That's cool.
They offered up the six students, and Mr. Laux and Dr. Steady are actually going to help, you know, facilitate this class for a couple of weeks this summer. So that's pretty, you know, the nice, exciting opportunity. So.
Fun.
Yeah, so I mean, as always, if you have questions, I know, but a lot going on, a lot of positives, and keep that energy moving.
Thank you. Can I catch up to them real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for everything you've done for this school. This school is a better place. You're leaving a better place than it was when you got here. I appreciate, we appreciate you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you. I agree. Yeah, for sure.
Your, your.
Yep. My question was going to be how much, you said, feel free to reach out with questions. How much longer can we reach out with questions?
I mean, you know, it depends what the question is, but, you know, I mean, honestly, you know, I mean, I'm obviously under contract for the end of the month. The last three days of the month, I'm actually at the school administrators conference, actually with Mr. Stavali over Portsmouth. You know, but, but my cell phone number's around and, you know, if it's, doesn't have to be Linwood, Linwood related, but if there's ever wonders or questions, never hesitate to, you know, grab my number from someone or, you know, shoot an email and we'll connect. I'm only, you know, 20 minutes down the road, so.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Committee reports. We have look like the risk management committee minutes from that meeting.
You have your risk management. You also have your facilities report and facilities review for the last meeting. And the policy committee next this evening.
Yeah. It's sounding like policy committee is still reviewing a bunch of.
Well, this is for the next one, not the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We do have a bunch of policies currently after second reading.
Right.
Nothing, nothing in the policy about this evening.
Yeah, I don't think so. We didn't cover anything. There's nothing different from what we presented them, so no.
Okay. All right, then we'll address these policies.
Does anybody else have anything? Ready? I'll make a motion to move to second reading. Policy.
To, we're on second reading.
They're on, so approve.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve policies DK, EBCB, EBCG, EH, EHAA, GBCD, GBGA, GBGBA, GB, I'm sorry, GDB dash R, IHBBA dash R1, IHBBA dash R2, IJMDB, JBAA dash R2, JGB dash R, JLC, JLCD dash R, JLCE, JLCG, JLI, KDC, KFKF dash R. Oh, second.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Devin. Is there any further discussion on those policies? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, tensions, and that motion carries.
Now I can motion to withdraw policies BGF, EBCE, and JLA. One second.
Thank you, judges. Any further discussion on that? And hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, tensions, and that motion carries. Next up is staff nominations.
I have a nomination for assistant principal. And that's Ashley Young.
Heard that.
What? I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
When?
With honor.
And with excellent recognition.
Heck, yeah.
Part of it looks different to me.
Lights are bright.
Contract is for two year. Two year.
Sweet. That's my motion.
I second.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? I think maybe you probably are the only one that didn't know her as a board member.
Right.
Do you, is there?
Give me questions.
Give me questions. You want to see her.
I trust you.
Only mine. It's not my thing.
All right, there's no further discussion on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tensions. And that carries.
Fantastic.
Great.
Good news.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, we had two rounds of interviews. The first round was more of staff with administration, and then the second round was administration, SAU administration.
Fantastic. Excellent. Now, will she be in this building and you will be down the other building? Are you going to do mix like you?
Yeah, I think we're going to try to, I'm going to at least try to flow, who knows how successful that'll be, but yes.
Yeah.
To be determined.
We, we definitely have to have like, you know, hubs where we, where we hang, sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, she's going to learn both buildings.
Yes, exactly. And, and it's, it's funny, when I first started, I was like, you know, elementary was like the foreign country to me, right?
I love you.
I had done high school, thank you. I'd done high school for so many years, and now it's like, I don't know if I want to leave here.
Awesome. That's good news.
Let's get any other.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
I have Joanna Boyso, B-O-I-S-S-E-A-U.
For?
It's an intervention coordinator for ESOL and Title I.
Oh, fantastic.
Combine positions and using the other monies from the positions that we did not use. Okay, so it's still in our budget.
Fantastic.
And she will be overseeing Title I. She will also be overseeing ESOL. You have another teacher who will be doing, who's getting certified completion, completing certification for ESOL, and that person will be actually working the one-on-one. But you need somebody who's going to see the big picture and, and set up the assessments and whatever for the ESOL. Also, Title I is delving in, doing that deep dive, and, and coordinating the curriculum with the needs of the students. And she will also be analyzing the curriculum and the programs that we have in place, pre-certified, and all the programs that we use in the school. So, and her scheduled stuff is based on MNA Step 16, and then she will have extra days to work within the building as that that coordinator type of, you know, role. So it won't just, she won't be a teacher per se, so she'll be looking extra days on that. That's it.
Do you have the?
I have her thing, yes. She will also be reviewing student data with the teachers, meeting with the teachers, reviewing what the data looks like and what it, what it's telling them and how to move forward with what programs we already have. She will also be helping in looking at new programs that we may need based on the data that's being shown.
Excellent.
Do we actually have a job description for that position in the school? Is it a new position?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Well, no, I'm just curious. I don't need to see it right now.
Yeah, we have to have a job description before we.
Right.
That's what, that's what I thought. I didn't know, because it was a new thing, I didn't know. Last year we had a part-time, so.
But it sounds like it's being created.
Combined, yeah. Well, it sounds like it's, it's, it's really going to look at, we need somebody's mind to look at the data and spend the time that's needed to figure out what it means, what it looks like, and what direction each student needs to go in. So you do need that outside force to be able to do that rather than just one teacher. So she will be working also with the teachers when they're working in their PLCs, which are the professional learning communities for each of the groups. So she will work with a K through two group. She will also work with the K group, the first grade and the second grade separately, it's N B. And then you will have your, it's called horizontal and vertical. So she'll be doing, and then she'll also be looking at the three, three through five group as a group so that they can move forward and the transition will be smooth, and also look at each individual grade level and see, go in, do the deep dive and find out what needs to be tweaked and, and where the numbers are and where the kids are going.
And give that direction specifically to the teachers.
To the teachers.
That's fantastic.
At the big plan.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It's kind of a hybrid role. Going in a couple different.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the qualifications were just, I mean, when you looked at all the certifications that.
That's fantastic.
It's amazing. So it'll, it'll be great.
I will make a motion to approve hiring Joanna Boyso for ESOL power. That's second.
Thank you, Devin. Any further discussion on that? All of you in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, tensions, and that motion carries to the board. And.
We continue to post the Z health position. We roll it so that it comes back, refreshes and comes back on top. We have not had any app. So, yeah, it is very interesting. The district's. So, yeah, it is very interesting. The districts are all, I mean, we're, so far, we're the luckiest district. Because we have all, all of them, we zoomed in, got all of them as soon as they came out and um some of them are missing content area high school courses.
Hmm.
So.
So now we're, we're down um a just that phys ed health teacher.
Phys ed health.
And um a para and a custodian, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we're still the. Just the, okay, that's not bad. That's the, that's not bad.
I mean.
It's not great, but we'll take it. Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Still moving forward.
Nicely done.
All right. Don't see anything on a new business, but we do have under business strategic plan.
I don't have any of this.
Well, yeah. Continuing business with strategic plan.
Oh, strategic plan. Now, we just, oh, we just received the NEAS report and uh feedback, so we will be. A- as an administrative team, looking at that and responding to even some of the component areas that we've been working on. Uh, might even can change, you know, at this point because we've been moving forward, so we will be looking at those areas and then. It, it's a back and forth thing for a while, but we'll send in. Our responses to their recommendations and then it's just back and forth and then in a couple of years, it'll come back again.
Is that something that we can get like a? Not necessarily the whole report. Maybe just like a briefing.
Absolutely.
Executive summary on that?
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just, just to help clarify, is right now it came out as a draft report.
Okay.
So, so we, we need to go through it and say, is there anything that we're like, whoa, wait a minute, this is not what?
Yeah.
Is it negative? Like if it got misreported in some way, shape or form, and then when they finalize it, you'll actually get a copy of the whole report.
Okay, well then.
Okay.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Good.
Thank you.
And then we create goals and and those steps to achieve those goals over the next two years before the decennial visit, so.
That, that is a time, that's gonna be a timing piece for you all, because that's when you're gonna be developing your, you're just coming into. That's why I said the timing is kind of perfect. You're, you're gonna be developing your strategic plan for the community. And this information is gonna be put in there, so you will, you won't have two separate reports and two separate sets of goals. Everything will be the same.
Okay, that hopefully will work out well. Um, superintendent search, was there anything on, on that front? Oh, it's, all right.
Yeah, we have a report through superintendent here. Committee, I'm Kristen Moncharmani, chairing that committee. And we're here to update you on progress uh since last meeting. Just to recap a bit, um, at the last meeting, we'd asked the board um for a direction on next steps forward. Um, in terms of how um. Each of the next steps in the process, just confirming with the board whether they wanted us to keep pursuing that, so um the answer was yes. We went on, we did um further interviewing with the two candidates. Um, who the search committee was still considering. Um, extensively, several hours of interviewing. I think there was a summary from Megan Doherty at the last meeting that I won't recap, but her emphasis was on. Um, how thorough the process was. So these next steps in the process. Um, again, very thorough, um, even longer time spent with each candidate. The interview content was different. Um, we went through the same process to go back at the end to a rubric of competencies that had been identified via the community surveys. And the committee and input, et cetera, before we began the process. So um, as a result of that. Uh, the search committee has done a lot of debating and taken a lot of votes, actually. Um, and I'm gonna do my best to summarize those and tell you where we are um with the presenting. Um, candidates or candidate. So, uh. In terms of the rubrics and competencies, um, on the basis of the next round of interviews, the long, so-called long interviews. Uh, the committee uh definitely took. Several different votes and had a lot of discussion that was melted into that. Um, I would say a summary is. That there were, um, there was a minority group that sort of really looked and said. Okay, we're supposed to be recommending forward on. Uh, qualification and fit. And there was a minority group that had some questions with one of our candidates about fit. There was a minority group that had some questions with. Um, candidate about qualifications, just on the basis that when we were ranking on rubrics. Um, there was a minority of the committee that felt that um one of our candidates didn't. Score high enough to be really deemed qualified. Throughout the process, qualified kept getting, you know, redefined, right? Because we began with all of the candidates who were qualified to go to the first round of interviews, right?
Right.
And then as a result of that first round, where did they fall on this rubric for competencies? What did that mean in terms of qualified to go to the next round? Um, and so coming out of this last round. Um, you know, there were two minorities, there was a little bit of expression of not sure about fit from a minority. Not sure about qualified from a minority, but the overall um committee, I would say, said. Well, on both candidates, qualified, however, um, a majority of the committee has voted. Based on only one of the candidates. Being at or above the other candidate on every competency that we looked at. Um, so the committee at this point has voted only to move forward for recommendation, one of the candidates um from this process. Lots of discussion went into that. It really did. Um, and I think, you know, every person who appeared on the. Um, committee got to speak on those points and was sort of asked to speak on each of those points. Um. And then votes were taken. Um. So at this point, the committee is recommending just one candidate moving forward to the board. Um, so the questions before the board. Would be, and we ended up taking a vote on this as well, because there was some dissent on whether the committee then had a recommendation about next steps. Um, and I would say of the group, um. Six out of nine who were on the last call discussing this recommended that the board did, would. Either make the choice to or actually would do a meet and greet. Um, even with only one candidate being recommended. Obviously, it's the board's decision as well to do an interview. With that one candidate. Um, and then Nora, the Bryant group requested. Um, a decision from all of you, which doesn't have to come to us in the public meeting, but would have to go back to her. Of whether you're asking for the Bryant group to do both reference checks. And to define that, we had lots of reference letters that we considered, but the Bryant group has not yet done calls. Because they would only do that on the finalists, to people maybe who were not even in the reference checks, just randomly in the employment history to say. Hey, talk to me about this. So the board needs to kind of get to the Bryant group and say, yes or no, I'm doing that, and um a more extensive background check. Those are all things that are part of the process, but um it was definitely very thorough and and literally everyone was asked to speak and give their justifications why. But there was one candidate that. As I said, rated on all of these rubrics of competencies, either at or higher than the other candidate across all of them. Um, so. Not unanimous, but also not a seven to six kind of majority in terms of the recommendation to move just one candidate forward. Questions on that?
Um, not specifically on that, but so from. The Bryant group needs to know from the board, and I guess we'll have to have maybe a short non-public after a meeting tonight. About whether we want them to complete the background checks and the reference checks. Is there any information that they need from us?
So they um would help you set up a meet and greet and there was some discussion, there was a lot of discussion about whether the search committee, there, there was definitely some feeling. That clarity sooner rather than later for the school community about who, next leadership piece made the meet and greet sort of superfluous. But again, taking input from everyone on that, the search committee is recommending that either it be the board decision, whether you do a meet and greet or that you actually do it. Some, some members of the search committee felt like that should happen, the community should still be able to meet that person and provide input. And that would be handed handed with your.
Community.
Yes, so it'd be a meet and greet with the community in addition to the interview with board. So there was some question about, but again, Bryant group, it's sort of what they do and they are prepared to sort of help organize that and what, what you would usually be trying to get out of that.
And do you, you know, to what extent they're prepared to assist with the board interview, or is that just gonna be completely separate from their operation?
I have, I, I think that they are prepared to guide on what a, you know, what a board interview usually looks like, but they, they would not do. My understanding was it would not be um with the search committee, the Bryant group really led those interviews and then we had time. You know, we paused throughout the interview, maybe every forty-five minutes or so, discussed as a committee, asked questions. They went back and led it and then at the end, the committee had a chance to ask individual questions. I don't think that's what they envision. I think they envision it much more being board.
Okay.
Directing their own interview.
And that's something I can follow up with. Nora as well, okay. Thank you for being here.
Any other questions? It was, it's definitely, it's thorough. I think a lot of us made the comment that we had learned things about. Leadership versus management and the types of questions we were asking and trying to get, you know, qualities out. It was a good process.
It was good.
Yeah, well, thank you for taking your time to do that.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. So I guess on, on that, um, we'll do two, a short, non-public after.
Yeah.
All right, um. Let's see, students go this evening, we do have that.
All right. Sorry, I got a long one tonight.
All right.
All right. So from Jen Witcher, uh, Linwood Prom was held at Loom Mountain in the Cankey Building last month. Kids had a great time. Thank you to Kevin Bell for putting us in touch with Andrew and Connor, who are great to work with uh at Loom. And Steve was tremendous help. Food choices were awesome. Kids had a great time. We had about seventy kids um and a full night of dancing in cornhole. Uh, thank you to administration for supporting, giving the Cankey a try. Uh, thank you to DJ, DJ Webb. Uh, Linda and Scott McIntyre for the pictures. Please check out Linda's Facebook to see a ton of prom photos. Uh, Christie Duris, me, Jason, and Officer Scrafford, uh, Shaqron. Um, I guess I thought it was a delightful building. I was shocked, because I did, I was sort of like, really? But it was fantastic. Um, it went really, really well. Everybody had a great time. Um. So another announcement, students Destiny, Emma, Dalton, Meredith, Asia, Rowan, Haley, Edna, Willa. And Emma attended a workshop here at Linwood to follow up with their work. We started in the fall, looking at Linwood data retrieved from the youth risk behavior survey. That the high school students take. Students worked in the morning analyzing Linwood data and choosing areas students need. Needed some education on examples, how to get free by camel helmets, laws about wearing seat belts, et cetera. Uh, students created posters and flyers to bring some education awareness to their peers. Posters and flyers can be found outside the science wing on the bulletin board. Officer Scrafford and Ms. Witcher look forward to attending the Getting to the Y Conference with these students again for the fall. And then Dory Weedy uh would like to note that on May twenty-ninth, Linwood hosted our second annual Taste the World event. We had around ten community members, that's really more like ten families, um, that celebrated their culture with food. We served the entire K twelve community with sampling of food from around the world. Ms. Weeden's Spanish classes. Had many cultural displays of music. Ms. Witcher's family in the super science class helped to make and serve food from different countries. Ms. Weeden, Ms. Duris, and Ms. Witcher uh would like to thank the community for the, and the school for the great event. And we look forward to doing it again next year. Uh, we also had six ELOs this year that focused on hotel management, athletic training. Digital photography, culinary arts, and architecture. Um, as we wrap up another year of ELOs, I want to give special thanks to. Stuart, Stuart Anderson at Alba Architect, Rebecca Golding at Golden Girl Concessions, and Renee Blood. At Rhythm Tap and Grill. Um, I sat through a couple of these um ELOs and there were some really, really strong ones this year. Um, it's just two, two years that I've been involved with the number of them, they've been really good. Um, so this, just from my perspective, is a fantastic thing to have. Um, oh, I'm sorry, missed a bit. Uh, they went above and beyond for our ELO students, Dylan Blood, Kate Claremont. This year and gave much insight uh into the world of architectural design, culinary arts, restaurant management.
Fantastic.
So last year, you had some present to us here. Was that?
Yeah.
So was that skin?
That was from the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm not holding fingers or anything, I'm just, I, I thought it was when uh the. The presentation was saved on electric, I thought it was a great presentation that they one group demonstrated, so I guess I. I would like to see a presentation. I think that's been, I think, two years in a row. We had uh, we had the uh. I mean, Andrew Willstone.
Oh, yeah.
They did, that was a couple of years ago. Uh, that is always a, a nice way to see it. I think it's a great way to showcase uh the, the community's support for the school too. Thank you. And community. Paul, do you have anything?
Oh, Paul, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. My name's Paul Sherdwan. I have three children at school. Um. So I just want to talk to you about, once again, about grades. And uh, I'm not trying to um use anyone's name personally, just trying to talk about things in general. I've been coming here for about five years talking about grades and about the uh performance of Linwood. And uh, one of the purposes, one of the primary purposes is my children are um gifted according to the. Um, definition the state uses. And uh, my son, for example, tested ninety-nine percent in NIWA. He reads about four to ten hours a day, depending on how much time he spends. Uh. So he, I bought him a program for tutor. I think I shared that with some board members. And uh, he uh self-studies quite a bit and he asks to self-study. He's a very motivated learner. The state law requires. That every student gets taught to his level. That is state law. It's a state law that. All good to shoot, students will be reported to the state. Linwood's not doing that. Dividingly, at least two. If I look it up, there probably close to be four state laws that are breaking right now. And I, oh, we have to document that later for you. I requested. Well, let me, let me back up just a little bit. Um, so he's doing uh tutoring that I'm doing. Um. Also, an independent uh. Math teacher was helping out the other la, uh, I think last year, and he got a lot of support then as well. He's also gotten support in some of the lower grades. He got good support in kindergarten, um, decent, I think, at first. Uh, second was very spotty, uh, third was, was okay. It stopped in fourth completely. I, I had to fight uh to get in any uh extra help and it hasn't happened at all this year, not at all, zero. Um. I'm uh trying to uh work with uh staff and teachers. Um. But apparently, it, it's just not, it's not resonating at all. So I want to make a public statement because there's not, apparently, uh, they're trying to throw at me all of a sudden that I need to uh do. Uh, certain forms and for certain things that need to be submitted before you understand that he needs help at certain levels. Which is kind of ridiculous, since I come here, I've been to at least thirty, if not fifty meetings here. I've done presentations to this board, I've demonstrated stuff. I'm the one who initially brought them in to be evaluated. Uh, again, at the grades, you have the NIWA, the SAS. You have the uh AP scores, which actually weren't presented uh to you. Which is still a, a, a large question, while you weren't presenting the AP scores in the last uh annual review. You were given the SAT scores without any analysis. Um. So I am asking the board to monitor this situation. I'm asking every teacher that my children need help. And they need to be taught at the level that they're, that is appropriate. Whether we need to fill out a form or an IDP, I requested an IDP at the beginning of this year and I was denied that. And he's received no extra help. And he's the top person in his class. You know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to go into that. I don't want to be braggadocious. It's actually, you know, there are other people in this school who have not been uh, who are also gifted, who are also not being addressed in this issue. And I can name five of them off the top of my head. And again, it's required by law. And it's not being done.
I guess at this point, you have a little.
Judy, you'll be at the next meeting, yeah? Okay, just want to make sure. And shout out to the, the Ice Cream Social, Dr. Tooty on the horn. That was awesome. The kids loved it. The, I did the practice. Arwen was saying that. What'd you say? The, the boss principal. The boss principal. Because she doesn't know what a superintendent is, but the boss principal was there, played in the band. Yeah.
He is the boss principal.
No, that was awesome. Thank you for that.
The kids are good.
The, the kids love it. Yeah.
They were telling me when to come in, when to be soft. You need to play louder.
That's cool. I love it. I love it. Yeah.
So anything else before we go? No, that's okay.